Ms. Pinyard, will you call roll, please?
Chair Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Jennifer Willard. Olive Gallagher. Priyann Josinski.
Here.
Erin Woods. Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, will staff lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
On note, we have discussed right chair about allowing some of those comments to be at the end as well.
Yes.
So for those either on Zoom or in the audience, that's an alternative after you hear the presentation tonight.
Anyone that has any comments at this point or waiting until later. All right. Seeing none, we will move forward to our next agenda item, which is the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan Work Session. Mr. Polly, take it away.
Thanks. Good to be with you again tonight. It's nice to have Joe. Joe deals with Angelo with MIG here as well. We've been working together on this, but he hasn't been in the room for us for our work session yet, the physical room. So tonight I will give some brief opening remarks and then turn it over to Joe for the bulk of the presentation and the discussion to facilitate that tonight. So really tonight, let me share screen again here. Focusing on land use, particularly policy, housing policy, as we move forward with the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. So really, I want to be clear what we're doing, right? We're not going through detailed tables of the development code or the actual text of the development code or anything like that. That will come in due time because we realize the commission, though we've drafted some of it, the commission certainly will need some time to digest that and work through it. So really, for the immediate goals is to put into the master plan document itself, we need some policies, some implementation policies to guide the development code work around both residential and the commercial pieces. So we're really where the deliverable or the outcome are really looking for tonight is clear guidance on that language that should be in the master plan to direct what should happen with the development code. Any questions about what the intent or what our goals are around that tonight? Is that making sense? And really, these will tie to, I mean, we've been building up to this. I mean, we've back to beginning of this year when we're talking about the affordable housing analysis. And then we talked about the commercial study. We've talked about the mapping and the transect and variety by the different colors and urban forms on the map. We've talked about the intent and about variety and that we need to require some variety if we're going to get the type of variety and the implementation of the policies that we want. So that has all built up to this, and then we'll continue implementing it with actual development code in due time. So as we look forward to that development code again, which is not, we're not going to talk about that, those details tonight, but just so you have in your, what will, what our discussion tonight will eventually influence is both the clear and objective standards that we're going to need for the development code, but also those guidelines, those purpose statements, those intents that will come in be crucial if a developer elects to go through a discretionary review alternative, which we do allow. If they're trying to get waivers for those that have been on DRB or things like that, this intent language will be really important if a developer elects to go that direction. So where we are in the process, just want to cover that tonight. We're talking about these policies, as I've said. So you have your double, your double meetings coming up next month. So the 12th will be your regular meeting, which will actually be other non-Frog Pond topics. Then October 19th will be an extended work session to go through the entire draft of the master plan document, which I think now sits at 82 pages, Joe?
And counting.
And counting, so lots of pictures, though, so don't worry. And then November 16th, again, that's a bit delayed than your typical second Wednesday meeting. November 16th is the current schedule for a public hearing on the master plan. So then going into 2023, we'll be working on the development code, particularly that first half of 2023, the development code, as well as other implementation things such as infrastructure funding, variable rate SDCs, or how we're going to do the details of the funding mechanisms for infrastructure, as well as potentially some public work standards, standards around stormwater and some other detailed standards. So I briefly want to revisit this as well, is what the colors on this map mean. This is, when it comes to the end, the zoning map will have this all one color. All right, it's all going to be zoned one thing. Really, these colors represent, are not talking about different types of units. They're not talking about this is multifamily, this is single family, this is middle housing. And it's not establishing density. When you look at most of Wilsonville's residential zoning maps, the different colors often represent different density. This isn't doing that either directly. Really, what they mean is it's the urban form, the look and feel, the bulk of buildings, how far the buildings are from the street and between each other, minimum lot size, things like that. And so we've talked about that transect that that creates, where you have the brown is the densest looking, and then it feathers out from there. So we've talked before also about the scale of variety, but that's important to revisit as we build into this and tonight is there's the larger broad scale, the zoomed out scale, which you see on the map, which is urban form. But then there's the more granular scale, which, for example, in Vilbo, where there was a master planner that looked at the whole thing together, controlled a lot of the property, you know, they mapped that pretty granularly. And that's oftentimes housing type, very specific housing types. In this case, we're addressing that through development standards, which are not mapped. And so that will be those standards that determine that granular variety is really the focus of what we'll be discussing tonight. I think I'll leave it at that. Before passing off to Joe, just want to give a chance for Miranda or Joe to add any comments to this introductory piece.
The one thing that I would kind of underline is that the clear and objective standards requirement that is in state law and is sort of being reinforced by the courts has a new emphasis. And so when we talk about policies tonight, we're thinking about those and how they would direct clear and objective standards. So we have to go from the policy intent to what we think is some of the details. But as Dan said, there will be a discretionary review alternative that sort of is in between and provides flexibility. So some of the specifics that you hear from us tonight is just with that particular lens of we're trying to think all the way to the clear and objective.
Miranda, anything to add for opening?
No, I don't think so. I think we are going to have a lively discussion tonight. There's a number of, I think, questions that the team has for all of you to get input on. We should be able to move through it pretty well within the couple hours. We plan to be here tonight. I'll be paying attention a little bit to that, just to make sure we don't miss the last, like, five questions. But it's going to be much more dialogue and discussion oriented than presentation from here on out. There's some key content we want to share, but really in the lens of kind of reminding you and then asking for your feedback. So I think feedback on that will help us to actually get moving on both what we need in the master plan, but then also something to bring back to in the near future for the code. So thank you. We really appreciate you being here on a second time this month, knowing you have two meetings next month as well. So I just want to give you my gratitude.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Joe?
Okay.
I'll turn it to you.
All right, let's go to the next slide if we could. So the residential policies have to do with a variety of topics. The top bullet, we've labeled policies to confirm because we think those are topics that you've discussed to some degree already and are relatively straightforward. We'll go through each of them individually about the spectrum of housing types, minimum densities, and the type 1, 2, 3 urban form standards. But really, the more creative and sort of new material is in how we get to the fine-grained variety standards. So let's go to the next one. So taking this one step at a time, the first policy approach to confirm is that this full spectrum of housing types would be allowed in Frog Pond East and South. And the approach right now that the team is evaluating is that the residential neighborhood zone district that applies over in West would be modified to continue to apply in East and South so that there's some continuity, but there's also some new recognition of the plan that will be adopted here with this master plan. So this is pretty much everything, from single-family dwelling units down through the middle housing choices. Multifamily as well would be in allowed use within East and South. And then sort of the lesser-known ones of cohousing manufactured, which is a requirement of state law, accessory dwelling units, and cottages and tiny homes are mentioned here. They're actually within the definitions of these other housing types, but there's been interest on the part of the commission in those. interest on the part of the commission in those. So that's, that is the spectrum of housing types. Let me go through a couple more slides, and then we'll pause for your feedback. The second kind of basic requirement that would be folded into the code is that there would be required minimum densities. The city requires minimum densities in all residential zones, has for many years. In the past, it's been based on 80% of maximum. That's been a turn on its head a little bit by middle housing updates. But what we have with the master plan is the benefit of mapping of the area and capacity estimates. So the capacity, housing capacity estimates that have been prepared as part of the master plan would be used to establish minimum density. There are waivers within the code that if you're steep or you have trees, or if you have this or that, you can adjust that. But the minimum density would be required. It would be based on the starting point of the master plan calculations. Those same numbers are being used for infrastructure analysis. So we are testing the street system. We are sizing the water sewer and storm facilities based on these minimum densities plus some assumed headroom above it. And then all of this gets folded into what an applicant needs to to provide for minimum density on a specific site. So minimum density is part of the package. The third item to confirm is that the urban form type 1, type 2, and type 3 standards would be written in the code in the familiar terms of building bulk, height and width, setbacks, lots, minimum lot size, and coverage that you can do within each. So type 1 has taller buildings and wider buildings. Setbacks would be somewhat shallower. The distances between buildings in type 1 would be more narrow as an allowance because it's intended as what we used to call the more dense area. It's the more compact area in this in this context. And then the the standards kind of feather out from there. As you move to type 3, all of those standards loosen up a little bit, and you're able to do what would be visually a little bit more of a traditional neighborhood. So those those are the basics. Those are the kind of the easy ones for tonight. And I'll just pause right there. We wanted to use this as a stopping point and see if you had any feedback or questions about those at this juncture.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Tuzinski, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions. I would like to see the and confirm permitting the full spectrum of housing going forward for all the areas within Frog Pond East and West. I think that would kind of, well, not kind of, but it would help us to realize the intent that we had going into planning this going forward. That's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. I do agree. I like to see the full spectrum of housing. You mentioned manufactured housing is required to be allowed by law? Is that what you?
In in residential zones, and I'll look to staff, actually, I think it's all residential zones. It might be just single family.
Yeah, and I mean, we still can apply architectural standards and stuff, so.
Right, I understand.
If it if it did come in, it should blend. I mean, particularly, I mean, if imagine cottage cluster that may be a prefab or something. So I mean, that could totally be done, so.
Circa about 1975, that law was passed.
Understood. And then what is cohousing? What's the definition of that?
We've written a definition in in the in the code. It was done as part of the Frog Pond area plan work. I won't get it exact here. We could look it up. But from memory, it's generally where there are shared facilities in a master-planned unit of land. So I don't know if it's required to not have individual lots, but the the cohousing projects that are built and up in the air in the Portland area are one-ownership, individual residential units, either attached or detached, and then common facilities for cooking or communal rooms or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mesba?
I have no comments or questions.
Okay. Can you go back to the the housing type list just real quick, please?
Oh, that's not Joe, that's me. Come on, Dan, come on. There we go.
Okay, and yeah, I I don't fundamentally have any issue with with the idea of allowing the full spectrum. I I think the only thing that I would note is that it's highly unlikely that we would see all of these housing types in East and South regardless of us having them be available because it's still up to the builder to determine what they want. Is that an accurate statement?
We'll talk a bit more about that, but generally, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I have a follow-up to that one.
Go for it.
We we talked about financial or economic feasibility of a bunch of these. So some of them, we already know are not going to be, they're not going to pencil out, right? You said we leave it to the developer, but you already had some analysis of what would be feasible.
Yeah, right, like, and just what's common, what what's understood by the market. I mean, I think most of these, cohousing is a question mark. I know it was explored, at least for one property in in West, then it ended up happening. But the rest of these, I would expect it somewhat, I mean, I don't know about manufactured homes. I don't think it'd be the manufactured home you might have in your mind. But I mean, if I could see like a pre, a manufactured cottage or something on a foundation or something like that could easily come into the mix or alternative building methods. But single-family homes, townhouses for sure, duplex and triplex, I think that line between townhouses and duplex, triplex and quadplex is is kind of gray with some of the other laws at play. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, yeah, those would likely be built as well. Cluster housing cottages, think we will see some, probably not a ton, but I think you'd see some, definitely multifamily and ADUs, so.
So I guess you're confirming what I was saying is that we are allowing all of these. Some of them have more probability of being done than others.
Correct.
So it's not like we're going to see all of these pretty evenly distributed.
Yeah, and we're not. And when we do talk here in a minute about any requirements, they'll be categorized. So if to meet one requirement, there'll be multiple ways to meet it with different unit types. So, yeah.
Thank you. I think I.
That was great.
I slid this in. I you were in the middle of your comments.
That's okay. I think I'm in agreement on run requiring minimum densities and and using the urban forms. I think the Devils will be in the details of defining exactly how we make that happen. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So I think we'll go on to the even finer part.
So let's let's move on to variety policies. What we've talked about so far, lots of models, lots of history, code examples everywhere to draw from. The variety policies are new and require some some specific thinking to this master plan and to the practices of Wilsonville. The starting point we'd like to suggest is really the purpose of variety at all. Throughout the process, you have confirmed some principles that have been applied to the master plan of planning for variety throughout, including accessible options, integration of affordable choices, and that's lowercase affordable. So what would be in the market may be that the city takes initiatives to to do some more regulated affordable-type housing projects. But at this point, we're talking about affordability oriented to the market and then the transective uses throughout. So the the policies in the following slides are intended to implement those three outcomes in the plan. Go to the next slide, please. So how do we do that? We'd we'd like to suggest an approach in which there are three steps or three kind of layers to the cake, so to speak, that are put together to deliver, deliver variety. And the first is to categorize housing types into some groups, and I'm going to have to show you in a next slide to really fill that out. But categorize housing into some some groups so that there are some choices. You can choose from this group or that group or a third group to meet the variety standard. To establish some minimum categories per sub-district, or maybe better said, per sub-geography of some sort. It may be at the property level, property ownership level, or the sub-district. We've mapped sub-districts, so that's why we've listed that term. But a minimum number of categories in the areas throughout the plan. And then some standards about the percentages of what needs to provide be provided within the categories, a maximum for net area of any one, a minimum net area for some of the others, and a minimum for middle housing. So this is, I'll go through each of these to to fill in the blanks a little bit more. But this is the the three-step approach that we're going to suggest for your discussion and would be rolled into policy statements in the master plan.
And I would particularly note to follow up on some of our, we had a pretty good discussion prior about whether or not to incentivize versus require when it comes to these percentages of, and we've heard pretty clearly that we don't really think that if it's just an incentive or suggested that it happens. So we've, the guidance we've got to this point is we're actually going to put some requirements in there. So that's where that third step really is comes from.
Okay, so let's go to the next slide and take the first step, categorizing housing unit types. Why do it? As I mentioned a moment ago, it's to provide some buckets or some groups of housing types to choose from as you're meeting these various standards. How do we go about that? The considerations are things that you've talked about, the market rate affordability, particularly in the 80 to 120% MFI range. We know that there has strong been demand, there's been strong demand for 120 and above, and Frog Pond West is pretty much the manifestation of that. The city's equitable housing strategy and the analyses that have been done for this plan are really trying to look for ways to bring that bracket down a little bit more into the first-time home buyer or whatever equivalent there is that is more in the 80 to 120. So that's a consideration. Accessibility, adaptable, single-level living is the way that we've sort of fleshed it out here as another consideration. And then housing choices and variety for variety's sake, that it's an interesting place to live. It has the kind of architectural variety and and quality and change in scale and and mix of neighbors that we see in some parts of Villebois and other neighborhoods in in Wilsonville. So this is the kind of considerations that we've put into the chart that we'll show you in the next slide. So let's go to the next one.
All right, so we'll pause here to look at these bubbles. And I'll note, I've, you have a paper handout of this because we'll, I think you'll want to reference back to this as we talk through some of our, let me go back here, as we talk through some of the other policies. So I do want to explain this this Venn diagram, if you will. So the big bubble encompasses all the housing types. That whole list that you saw previously, everything can contribute to variety. Pretty straightforward, simple notion. And then you have these two other bubbles where you have things that unit types that that fall into, that can help serve based on the affordable housing analysis, that 80 to 120% MFI area. And that's the 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 golden bubble there. This includes multifamily and attached middle housing in particular. Then you have the accessibility bubble. For a master on the main, it's that's the only thing we have over there because if you have a master on main or a large, single-story home, yes, that's accessible, but it's not affordable. So then in the middle, you have where it turns out green on this on this diagram are housing types that still provide provide variety, affordability, and accessibility. So that's where you get the right, the affordability and accessibility overlapping. I will note, as is noted on your handout as well, some of these stay about the same affordability as the as the ones that are just in the golden rod. However, a number of these, particularly versions of the multifamily or attached middle housing that would be accessible are are notably, would tend to be notably more expensive than the non-accessible for a number of reasons. They take up more land, and land's expensive. Multifamily, if you're doing elevator-served multifamily, that's going to be much more expensive than stair-served multifamily. And also in construction, I mean, the the additional cost for the foundation, trusses are oftentimes one of the most expensive parts of the house, or anytime you're expanding the footprint, the additional cost of roof and trusses is is not a small thing. So so as we talk through the requirements, you you do tend in requiring some of the accessibility that there is, I guess, an inverse relationship to also reducing some of the affordability. So that's something to keep in mind as we work through these as well. So again, you have that in front of you to refer back to, and I'll turn it back to Joe.
Let me explain this slide, and then we'll pause to to see what questions you have. I think I did, we want to kind of go one step at a time here, and we can use your discussion at the end of the meeting for how comfortable you are and your your guidance in this. But what we're showing on this slide, then, is assume for a moment that these categories were created. And so how are they applied? There would be standards that would say there are minimum categories per some geography within the neighborhoods. Why do that? Well, it gives us some assurance of variety, and it also gives us a tool for inclusion of particular housing types. So how would that be written into the standards? You need to have some adaptation to the parcel size and so on. Smaller properties would provide fewer categories. Imagine you own two acres or so out there, probably just one category is required on your property. Larger properties, you own 40 acres, the number's going to be larger. There ought to be three, four, five, who knows how many. We have to go through that math together. But larger properties have more ability to deliver on the variety of categories, so they would have a larger requirement. So that number is X at this point. But that is really kind of at a practical level. What we're thinking for this foundation is that there is the categories, and we'll go back to that slide in a moment, and there is some requirement that they are required in certain numbers per sub-geography. So let's let's just go back just to repeat the the Venn diagram here. What those bubbles are, are essentially a first cut at what the categories might be. The gold is multifamily and middle housing types. The gold is multifamily and middle housing types. The green in the middle is a set of kind of, I guess, it's sort of in-between housing types, cottage clusters, ADUs. Here's where you might get your single family in, that's accessible with multifamily units, or attached, that has accessibility. In the blue, there would be a master-on-the-main type of provision, and then in the purple, there is just detached, but no requirement for accessibility, single-level living. So the code would say something like, your property requires X number of categories. You need to do some of this one, some of this one, and some of this one. So let's pause there before we get into kind of any further implementation of this. What questions, what concerns, opportunities are you seeing in this?
Commissioner Carr. So in the last allowable types you mentioned, manufactured and cohousing, but neither of those appear on this. Is that on purpose or an oversight?
So let's take manufactured housing. So, I mean, there's so many different ways that you can classify housing, first of all, right? And so there is some art to this. And that has been thought through. So manufactured housing, I mean, that could be an ADU, it could be a cottage cluster, it could be a detached, single-level home. So yeah, it's allowed, but it's not really how we're categorizing it in order to get at these policies. Same for cohousing, and it could be a number of these, I mean, it kind of gets at another, some other things, but it could be classified, I mean, it could be a cottage cluster, it could be attached middle housing, for example.
Yeah. They would have to have a home in some categories. So it's a good catch, I think it needs, they would need to be added, and the full spectrum is represented in the categories.
Since we're calling them types, and then we're categorizing the types, they should be categorized somewhere.
Yeah.
I think maybe cohousing fits into that, but manufactured homes are really, they could be a number of different unit types.
Then maybe it would be worth putting a note at the bottom that if there's exclusions to that, if there's a reason why we haven't put a type into the categories, then we should make note of that and say, you know, manufactured homes could be in any of the categories. Other examples like that.
I would agree with that.
I have a question on that. Do you have a specific definition of manufactured housing?
Yeah, there is a specific, I mean, it gets into like the year of it was built. This is all based on state statute and rules.
I see. Because these days, you can have components of a house manufactured and then brought to the site and just put together. That's still, to me, a manufactured housing because it's been built in a factory and assembled on-site. And it can be manufactured in a factory by a specific design. It's not just stamping out the same thing. It's not mobile home kind of manufactured housing of the old. These days, we are seeing manufactured housing as really high-quality.
And technology can also change and improve during the lifetime of this plant as well.
So if that is included in this definition of manufactured housing, yeah, it could be any of these. You're basically saying that new technology is available to all of our categories, and that would be a good asterisk or footnote. Cohousing, I think it needs to have a home because that is...
Yeah.
And I think, I think from both a cohousing and a manufactured home, a reference to the state definition or a definition in the document, I think, would be helpful because it is a more ambiguous.
So it may be helpful to, I mean, a lot of these come from the development code. Maybe we can put in the master plan a glossary and like say where we got the definitions from.
Right, yeah. And the point is very well-taken about modern-day practices on manufacturing components to homes and so on. So we need to kind of look at the definitions through that current lens.
Okay.
I want to give you one other sort of policy perspective on this, and that is, there are a couple of ends of the spectrum here that we know the market is strong. So at the townhouse end of the spectrum, strong. Multifamily, even, strong. Detached, single-family, fee-simple plots, strong. So where this is headed is, if we know that those are likely to be delivered in Frog Pond East and South, should the system be set up so that the requirements get at a little more than that? And that's where the green and the blue come in, and your choices about how many categories actually get required in the code. So that's how we're framing this approach.
Yeah, and you're going to hear from, I mean, you want to make sure that the requirements market, has a market feasibility reality to it as well. So how much to require that's still market, that's absorbable reasonably by the market?
I guess I would, the only counterpoint to that, I would say, is if we, as a city, believe that there needs to be a housing type there, and there isn't a demand for it now, that might be okay. If we're willing, as a city, to wait for that property to develop, if that, if it's such an important thing for us, we don't have to build it now if it's not the right product and not the right time.
And I would, yes, that's a policy choice you all should discuss. I would also just note that, from what I'm hearing, is that it's, I don't think it's synonymous demand and market feasibility either. There is a lot more to what the market's producing that's not just about demand. So, you know, part of that is that some of the green types have just been less traditional, or traditional at a certain point in time in history, but not currently, and that there are market economies or scales of economies that developers take advantage of that might play into their market feasibility, but not necessarily equate to the fact that there isn't demand for these housing types. There likely is demand for these housing types.
Good point. Thank you.
I brought a question up in my mind. If I understand correctly, the requirement is going to be, you said by some geographic area, but I'm assuming it's going to be by whatever property owner has, you know, the plot that they have. Is that correct?
So one example would be, you know, by sub-district. If it's a large property, it could be by sub-district. But if it's a smaller property, that's smaller than a sub-district, it'd probably be by property. Just, I mean, there's some feasibility of that when you're actually implementing it because it's hard to do the math of like across property lines if you're only developing a portion of whatever you set the regulation for.
So I guess I was running the scenario, my own mind has a follow-up to the chair's comment, that if it's not economically feasible now, the city can wait. And I was trying to figure out, well, are we saying that the property owner is going to wait? Because if that's what we're saying, then we are going to get to a place where it says, yeah, but you know what's left that's required now in this subcategory in this geographic area happens to be your property, and unless you're willing to do it in this type, we're sorry, you can't develop it. I'm not sure that that's going to stick.
Yeah, no, and we've given some thought to avoid those situations where, you know, getting it swept into the corner, sort of say, so.
We're going to get to that, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I'll wait.
Yeah. While we're on it, though, the solution, we think, is to set up the systems so that individual properties have their required number of categories for that ownership.
Clearly and objectively stated in the code.
Yeah, as a starting point. So let's just go to the next slide because it has the map on it. The best example is the south neighborhood. So as you drive down 60th, all those homes that are on your left are fundamentally, as you're driving south on the map, the homes on your left there that are on the east side of the street, those are, a lot of them are five and 10-acre deep, rather skinny lots. And so the system needs to be set up, we think, so that any individual property could go forward and not have to rely on the adjacent property and not be in the shell game of, well, who has consumed how many categories elsewhere. I think it's a little different situation up in the east neighborhood where we have larger ownerships and the sub-district mapping and good-quality master planning by those owners and those developers can deliver the system too, and plan where to do the units that they want to bring in first, which in some cases is a matter of where's the sewer? And where, you know, what product is going to come in on the market first, what product comes in second, maybe two markets are being hit at the same time. There's all of those kinds of things that are in play for a master-planned, larger-developer situation. So we need to anticipate both in what will be an incremental development of this area where we've got some small ones, some mediums, and some bigs happening.
So if I'm interpreting this correctly, the south neighborhood would be more or exclusively by property, categorized by property? And east would be potentially a mix of sub-districts because it is part of a large parcel? Or by property if there's some individual area that necessitates that?
Yeah, and I'll just add, it could be. That's our current thinking, that we think that's the way to approach it, given the large and small dynamics.
Okay. Yeah, I'm starting to come around to that because one of the big questions that I wrote down was if you have a sub-district and you have small properties, how do you ensure that, you know, one property owner, the first property owner, doesn't get all of the good stuff?
Right.
And then leave the rest for the other property owners?
Yeah. Let me, I'll just take this one step further. We've learned a lot by laying out the sewer system. And I don't know if you remember back to the mapping, but at the south end of 60th, there is a lift station there, meaning that you have to bring a line all the way down because that's where gravity goes is south. And then it is, goes into the lift and is forced up to the gravity system of Advance and Beckman, and off it goes. So once that line is in, that will open up all of those properties down there, at least from a sewer perspective. And so they could, they could come in basically at the owner's timing, once that infrastructure is in place.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
We are not in the practice of having temporary lift stations here as part of development?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Because technically, that's a possibility, you know? You have the, you're building, you're forcing it all as you're going down, but there's this temporary lift station, you know, a quarter of the way down that pumps up, and then when the next quarter is ready, you just basically move that down and continue to build. It's a more phased kind of approach that's done from the neighborhood I come from.
But that assumes we would be building the...
From north down, yeah. Well, and that's the assumption here is that, because that's more accessible to the main streets and so forth, it's going to come down. But, so that was one question. And the second question. See, that's always the problem with two questions because you forget the second question once you're done with the first one. No, the assignment of these things to properties, I think, is great because one of the alternatives is to allow for property owners to start trading, and that gets messy pretty quickly. If you don't want somebody to grab the best ones, you can assign and say, well, you know, if you're not ready for it, you can always trade back and forth between one another, we don't care, so long as at the end, everybody has all the stuff that we want. So I think that's a really good approach, is to just assign it to the properties from the get-go, and then it's clear.
And there's a matter of getting it at the right geography so that smaller geography, be it by sub-district or property, that you get variety, again, at that granular level, that there's already variety in each of those rather than having it more segregated, which we've heard clearly that we don't want.
The other issue that you've already seen in Villebois is sometimes if the good stuff is built first, and then you're going to say, well, now we have the, I don't know, what wouldn't be thought of by those who are already residents of the good stuff as not-so-good stuff, then they're up against it. Is it possible to make sure that these mixes go kind of all together as opposed to having all the single-family built first, and then when you start getting to multifamily and say, oh, no, we can't have that, even though it was zoned, or something like that? Are these categories and mixes going pretty much hand-in-hand as opposed to first one type gets all built out and then the next?
I think each development would have to propose a mix.
Okay. So it is eventually, it's essentially going to be a pretty good mix as they're going along?
Yeah, but the timing of the construction would be up to the developer.
Okay.
But the land use approvals would be done?
Well, it was done, I thought the land use was also approved in Villebois before you had those fires and all hell broke loose. I don't want to get to where we have done all the work and thought all of this through, and the first comers start saying, no, you know, we're here now, we're going to burn the bridges. That would be an unfair kind of way of developing this, in my mind. If, as a city, we're going into this development with a vision, we ought to be able to make that vision stick and not have it derailed by popular demand later on.
I think that's an important point, and I think that as we work through the discussion tonight and the remaining choices and policy options that you have and feedback we're looking for from you, that that might influence some of the thoughts that you might have. Because really, tonight's discussion is to help formulate what does this housing variety policy look like? And so if we're talking about having, we're putting before you important questions, like, do we require the housing mix? And if so, how many different types or categories is that? How many, at what level? And what's the maximum or minimum percentages around some of these things? And so I think feedback on each of those elements will help to maybe better meet that objective, or depending on what you come up with.
And I think some of it will come down to, we as a city may need to do better in terms of communicating the intent when those developments come forward to DRB or those places, making sure that the community is aware of the process that was gone through to get to this point. Because I think some of it is just that lack of knowledge. I know I struggled with that when I first got on DRB, is knowing, you know, where I sat in the process. So I think it will be important for us to make sure that we communicate that as we go through so that everybody knows, even the newcomers, you know, we aren't at step one, we're at step 30 of the process.
I agree, vision and communicating that effectively and clearly and continually. But also the values that are behind the vision. Because, you know, I've, in my, I can't count how many times in my long planning career have I heard people come to a public hearing and say, you're developing this beautiful field that was in my backyard for the past 15 years. I'm saying, look at the land use plan. This field was planned right about now to be developed, and that's what we're doing. Well, I don't want to lose my field. Well, you may have to move if you want to have a field in your backyard. But people get used to what was there before if they don't know what the values were behind it. And if what we're saying is, we are trying to create these categories for variety because variety is what's going to strengthen the city and its supply of housing and its supply of residents and manpower and effective governance and all of that, it becomes a moral imperative for us to maintain that. It becomes a moral imperative for us to maintain that value through the vision and through realizing it and building it.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, we'll keep going here.
Sure.
So, with that foundation of categories of housing and they're applied to geographies, then what might be some of the basic percentages and metrics that would be guiding that? The first that we'd like to suggest is that there is a maximum net area for any particular category. Why, obviously, so it doesn't kind of dominate the whole area? And how would that be done? The simple approach is a clear and objective standard for the maximum. We've batted around numbers and 50% seems about as round as others. It does have some basis in the affordable housing work that was done and at the policy level, we'd be expressed 40 to 60. But the main point here is to put out the notion that there would be a maximum net area for a category. And I want to underline the area part. It's not number of units, it's spatial area. So that's one percentage that we would like to suggest. Let me go through the other two here and we'll, and get to your discussion. The second, that would be the other end of the spectrum, a minimum net area for any particular category or for target categories. The reason would be to achieve affordability and accessibility, those in-between bubbles on the diagram that may not be the go-to parts of the market. To ensure some meaningful amounts are provided. So you couldn't just do two duplexes isolated over here and you've met your category requirement. And then we did have some community input that answered the question, if you didn't live in a single-family home, what would be your choice? And so we're sort of picking up on that aspect of one of our surveys. So, and for all of those reasons, this component of the policy and ultimately in the code would be a clear and objective standard that sets a minimum for the target housing categories. And then the third and last leg of the stool here is, oh, I'm sorry, a little bit more about this one. What would that percentage be? This needs some work frankly, but we think somewhere in the 10 to 20% range of what, of the net area would be for the minimum. So, you know, a developer that was required to do three categories, they might choose 50% max for the product they really want to build. But then the other two would have to be a minimum of 10 to 20% for their other categories. So, this takes a little bit market feasibility thinking of what the minimum should be and frankly, it's probably going to have to be a little bit of a best guess on what's reasonable from a city requirement perspective. Let's see what the next slide is here. Okay, now moving on to the third leg of the stool. So I talked about maximum, I talked about minimum, and then there's middle housing as well. This ties into one of the city's goals for affordable homeownership. It's the middle housing types that check that box the best. And frankly, it is one of the housing types that is least present in the inventory today and particularly in Frog Pond West, of course. So, we're trying to provide that opportunity. So again, there'd be a clear and objective minimum for middle housing types. So how these numbers really lay into the system is, I think, subject for more work, detailed discussion. But the feedback we would like to get when we get to discussion here in a moment is, does it make sense to have a maximum? Does it make sense to have a minimum? And does it make sense to have a minimum required middle housing? Okay, so, let's...
We've talked a bit on this one.
Yeah, we actually got pretty good feedback that you're comfortable, maybe just check in, that you're comfortable with the notion of categories and your notion that there would be categories per sub-area with the preference of the tax lot basis so that properties don't get isolated. I'm seeing head nods on that.
Looks to be a consensus, yes.
Okay. So then, these questions, we talked about the top one, establishing a minimum number of categories per sub-district. My example of three here is really only where you have enough ground to do it. So let's go to the other ones at the bottom, the bottom half of this slide. I'd like to turn it over to you, Chair Haveline, but the question is, are you comfortable with a policy approach of maximum net area per category, a minimum at the other end of the spectrum, and then a requirement for middle housing?
So I'm going to jump in because I, what I'm trying to figure out is, is how do you, because middle housing is part of the variety and affordability category and the variety affordability and accessibility categories. So, you're talking about specifying a net area for those categories, a minimum percentage of net area for those categories, but then adding a minimum requirement of middle housing within that category as well?
Or it'd really be an overlap? So I mean, for example, a unit could be in either of those categories and also, it could be in two categories and also meet the middle housing minimum?
So they could be meeting essentially...
Multiple standards.
Multiple standards and objectives at the same time. Yeah, I'll leave it there for now.
So why is it that it's own category?
It could be. I think at this point, the reason we haven't created it as its own category has been that through this process, and maybe I shouldn't be butting in and I should allow the project team to answer this, but I'll give you a little breather here. Is that through this process, we've heard, not necessarily that middle housing is always the ultimate goal to why we want a housing variety policy. We've heard that we want the housing variety policy for, what you've heard earlier tonight, for variety in and of itself. So that we don't walk into a place and it's just all the same housing type. And that we're providing for the various needs and wants in the community, right? There's, not everybody wants the same kind of house type. So, that's the variety for variety's sake. We've also heard that the housing variety policy, there's interest in having it address this affordability question we have. So, we know moving forward, that housing is getting more and more expensive and less and less affordable to people. And with our analysis, there's a huge pocket of that that has to be subsidized, right? But we also have this ability to meet some demand within the 80 to 120% area medium income brackets with housing types that are more affordable than your standard kind of size, single-family detached home. And so, we've created, the category is more about that than necessarily what the form of the house is. It's about, is it a more affordable housing type? And then, similarly, about accessibility is that we've heard it's important for us moving forward that we have homes that are accessible to people who have limited mobility issues. And those have been the drivers behind a lot of the input we've heard from Planning Commission, City Council, and the community, which is why we've chosen to categorize on that. Middle housing, some middle housing as built addresses those categories and values and objectives we have behind our policies. Some don't. Some depend on how they're built, whether they meet them or not. And so, middle housing in and of itself doesn't necessarily address that policy objective. So, we chose to take the middle housing and place it in multiple categories because it can sometimes meet those policy objectives and at other times does not. And so, that in and of itself has been a big driver and is why we've categorized the types that we have. We're asking this other question about middle housing specifically. There's twofold reason and one, I kind of was like, we don't really need to talk about it, but maybe we do. Which is House Bill 2001 and our compliance with state statute and how our team will figure out our compliance with that. But so there is value that at the state level, these housing types are clustered for a reason. And also, those middle housing types have been of interest to the council in helping to hopefully achieve first-time homebuyer opportunities for people and not necessarily in the form of a multifamily residential condo project. So, that is why there's this like secondary question of, is that also a policy objective we have? And if so, do we want to have a minimum number of types? And so, you've caught on very quickly to the fact that middle housing is like basically duplicated within this Venn diagram. And so, yes, you could if we said that you have to provide two middle housing types if you're a developer and you're trying to meet your percentage for your yellow bucket and your percentage for your green bucket. You can pick your two middle housing types to do that. You could do townhomes and then you could do cottage clusters or single-level middle housing of some kind where you have accessibility. And that would meet both your standards for your minimum percentages as well as your middle housing requirement.
So are the smaller properties going to have trouble meeting both of those guidelines? If we put, because again, we're, we've got a sub-district that's going to have multiple property owners, potentially. So when you break it down to that individual property owner, are they going to be able to adhere to the guidelines by multi-tiering it? Or is it going to kind of hamstring them in what they can build?
Well, that's why I think the table concept that Joe alluded to is important is we're going to look at it on, in the development code at that property level, at the kind of, the develop, what property is going to develop together? And is it feasible to get all those in and set the standards?
Districting at the property level, property owner level and then our guidelines would be either at the larger sub-district on the north or in the east? Or at the property line, property in the south?
Correct.
So why aren't we sub-districting it that way? On those smaller properties rather than sub-district it and having five properties and then saying, okay, now we got to do this?
There's other, like this, like each individual property doesn't necessarily need like a green vocal point, for example. So there's some other policies that play into the sub-districts, but...
Makes sense.
And I would note that you could choose at what level these different standards apply, right?
Right.
Explain that.
So, I think because, I mean, we're having a conversation around policy is that your minimum number of middle housing types, you could choose to apply that at a different scale than you would your minimums and maximums. So like the minimums and maximums, we've talked a lot about being like per development. But your minimum middle housing, I guess the question is, is it per development or is it per...
Yeah, you could get to a higher level and say like per sub-district in the south and I mean, that's going to tend to happen anyway.
Or for only properties over X acres?
Yeah.
That have the flexibility and will be doing more categories anyway. I think, I think we don't have the specific answer to the question that's been posed. It's a good, it's a good critique that we, we need to figure out how C on this list marries up with A and B.
Agreed.
And it may be that if you satisfy A and B...
But you get C.
You're getting to C.
Sure.
So, I guess I'd suggest to the team that we work on that and come back with ideas.
I think, I think we agree that we want min's and maxes so that we can control the variety. Now we just have to come up with what we can put into a policy.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say A and B is kind of the driver and if we can have C fit into A and C in the code, we'd probably go there.
Yeah, and I think maybe if we spend some more time talking with you about your thoughts for A and B, it might become more clear whether C's met or not because you have categories on this Venn diagram that don't have middle housing in it as well. So, I think maybe with the discussion of A and B, C will become more clear to all of us, or not, and then we'll go from there.
I was going to suggest that if you try to apply it to the parcels in this development and see if it works, that will very quickly tell you whether you need C or not. I'm fine with having A, B, and C. I'm okay being told that I need to have 50% of my daily intake fruits and vegetables and 20% of that needs to be fruits. So, that's okay with me. I can, I can work with those numbers. But the question is, I think that what's coming up is, is that going to be practicable with all of the parcels that you have here? Or are you going to end up not being able to apply it? And if you look at the parcel level and it is applicable, maybe it'll be, maybe it's C and it's fine.
But we can't make a policy that's not applicable, that can't be applied, the individual property.
Inadvertently creates conflicts between themselves.
Okay, good direction. On the A and B aspects, that kind of rolled through the conversation a moment ago. I saw head nods that, I think it was your expression, Commissioner Carr, that you're comfortable with min's and maxes here and I saw some other, so are we okay with that platform?
We are, yes, I should say.
And I should, I want to make sure to reiterate, I think if you end up needing to have a minimum for middle housing because it's going to be too tempting to work around it and we won't have minimum housing and we need to have minimum housing, then having a minimum number for middle housing as well. That, I meant, middle housing, not minimum housing. Minimum middle housing is what I meant to say.
It would be nice if we drove C. Yes.
But if...
We need C.
In your practice, as you do this exercise, if you run the scenario of, are they able to skirt middle housing easily? That should indicate that we need to have a minimum for that, for that type.
Because we do hear that we're wanting middle housing in this.
We do want middle housing. The question is, is that too much trouble for developers?
Or is it going to happen anyway without...
Well, if it's going to be happening anyway, it's easy because it's going to happen anyway. The question that I think, I, over the several meetings we've been struggling with is, how do we make sure the stuff that is not going to happen anyway?
Happens.
Happens, whether right away or eventually, as the chair mentioned. And I just want to make sure middle housing is not going to be one of those that's not going to happen anyway because it's more difficult to inconvenience or whatever.
And we also need to apply that or analyze that across individual properties because we also don't want to make one development overpower another one in the same sub-district. So, the first builder in wins, right? Last builder is stuck with all the middle housing, so to speak. Yeah, we want to prevent that.
I think we got what we wanted for the residential side. If I could suggest, we'd just quickly touch on commercial.
Can I pause just for a second? I just want to make sure, did the team want any input on percentages? Or any discussion or dialogue around that?
Yeah, I think if you have any input, I mean, I'm reading from the room that we don't have any better numbers than you've put forward, but I mean, I would comment on the 50% that one, we referenced the affordable housing analysis. Essentially, what it said is, market aside, what would tend to be built is 50% single-family and 50% like middle housing. And even if you do some, do some subsidize, you get some multifamily in there, but you're still in that 40 to 60%, that around 50% detached single-family. So, from that standpoint, I think that really signaled to us that this 50% is not only like provides the right, the variety meets the variety, but it's also what the market would tend to want to do anyway. In a scenario where we actually do want variety, don't just want it all single-family.
Have we had a visual preference kind of set of slides that shows 50% versus 60% versus 70% in a, how it feels? Or have we not had that? Because it seems to be what you're asking, and again, based on the conversation of how it should feel and all of that. I don't know what 50% is going to feel like. So, you know, it would be good to have some examples of, this is what this block looks like with 50% mix. Are you, is this feeling good? Is this looking like you would like it to look? I don't know if that's possible or not.
I mean, at this point, I don't think there's bandwidth really.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, we may be able to explore that more as we get into the details of the development code. But I'd also go back to the urban form and also that we anticipate the design standards we worked on when we did the middle housing project would continue to apply that would tend to make the townhouse building or the, or the multifamily building look more like a large single-family, right? In terms of asymmetry or symmetry and door locations and things like that. So, I think we haven't really talked about that because that's an existing standard that we don't plan on changing. But that's still at play where we have these architectural standards that are going to tend to help different unit types blend, be more complementary to each other.
So you're telling me design will take care of that feel issue? Yes?
That's the hope.
Okay.
Dan, would it be possible to look at Frog Pond West or an area of Villebois to get an example of if we had a, if you looked at those areas with this categorization, what would the percentages be? I'm a visual person and being able to see those examples and look at it and walk around it would be helpful to understand if, if we're going to say, okay, it's 50%. Okay, let's find a place that has that and, and see if that feels right.
I think even taking like a Morgan Farm or something and saying, okay, you know, these are, these units would all be townhouses rather than more, single-family, right? If this were in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be fairly simple to do or pull some block, some areas of Villebois that have a variety and kind of show what percent, the percentage.
So, for instance, when we were originally talking about housing types, and in a meeting I presented, I just talked about percentages, those came from my head driving around Villebois. So I drove, I'm like you, I'm visual. I drove around and said, okay, what, what would I expect to see if I'm driving around a neighborhood like Villebois? And, and I wanted to replicate that or something like that in Frog Pond. And so those percentages that I gave during that one meeting came from my driving around Villebois.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, pictures speak a thousand words, yeah.
That's how architects do it, too.
Also that it could be fixed through architectural design if...
Yeah.
As well. So we have to make an allowance for that. And you could drive through Villebois and say, okay, this is what it is, and I don't like some of these things that I'm seeing. But then follow it up. Yeah, those, those could get fixed by design kind of solutions.
Commissioner Tzatzinsky, any specific comments?
No, I just think that, like what you said, the, the visual aspect would really help.
Good to go on residential. We do have a commercial topic and I think there's some folks that wanted to talk. So, let's go to, there's only a couple of slides here. There is a commercial Main Street. We have this very diagrammatic cross-section here. So imagine you're looking from Stafford and Brisbane east. And so generous sidewalks, curb extensions to, as one of the tools for pedestrian quality, on-street parking, and very small setbacks, if any setback at all for the buildings. So that is sort of the very basics of the streetscape that are under consideration. And then the, the questions that are really just initial discussion, questions for policy are, should the city be flexible in allowing commercial or vertical mixed use? Meaning, in those buildings you are looking at, they could be just commercial or, or mixed use, either way. Or should they be compelled to be something? And should the city base the design standards on the Town Center Main Street code? And the reason we put that out is there's been a lot of thinking and, and community input and so on into the Town Center work. If you take it and you downscale it a little bit to this setting for some of the building heights and so on, it's pretty applicable. So that's, that's sort of the direction that we're headed and we wanted to check in on that.
Commissioner Carr, I saw you with your hand off the mute button first.
Yeah. So, pictures speak a thousand words. Hey, what is the current height that we're thinking for the main, commercial Main Street in a residential as opposed to Town Center?
So like four-story?
And is, is that this, what it is for Town Center as well, this four-story?
Town Center is a range and it is, the, essentially each sub-district of Town Center has a different target. And the high, the higher end of that is five stories that can go up higher than that if certain waiver criteria are met.
So what were we thinking multifamily would be in a residential area? Three-story? And then we'd allow four-story and commercial?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, and type one, you may see up to four-story multifamily. So I mean, it would, it could make sense. And let me get back to a map here, and this is a comment that I wanted to make anyway that...
I'm just envisioning a four-story building next to...
Well, I think...
Next to a single-story house.
So three-story is allowed everywhere. That building height is pretty much allowed everywhere within the city. And if you, and yeah, I think Dan's going to talk about the transect in terms of the relationship.
Yeah. And so something we've heard, so a couple notes I'll, I'll make here, too, is we've heard if there's interest in, in vertical mixed use, and this ends up being like four, four-plus stories here on, then maybe it makes sense. And we, we still agree that having kind of the, the type two along Stafford, for the most part, makes sense. But right here, it's across from a green space. So maybe having this, the relationship of this little block here, actually having that as type one, so it can be taller and kind of better mix with that, with a vertical mixed use product on Brisbane. And then, you know, at the street, there'd be a transition down from there. So that, that allows for more subtle transition. I think the developer is, has expressed interest in, in, in doing that and having more consistent, a consistent look rather than going, you know, four, four-story all the way down to two.
Yeah.
So, the other one, and same story on the south of that, you know, extending over. Also, you know, this land you show is a street down here. That, that will be updated in the next version. You see, there's been wetland, some wetland studies here and also consideration of, this is kind of a low point for stormwater purposes. So this would tend to be a, maybe a spot for a stormwater facility. That you're going to end up being more constrained on land at that corner of, of Stafford and Advance. So because of that and the ability to go vertical and, and you're going to have some green and some buffering probably from the corner anyway, to actually allow that to be type one as well across from the church to be able to, to efficiently use that land as it gets more constrained by, by, by the stormwater facilities and wetland. So I don't know if, if the commission has any concerns about going that direction based on what we've learned from, from additional study and additional discussions with potential developers here.
I just had the fear that you have a four-story building and then right next to it is, is a cottage cluster, right? This overpowering feeling of this big building and then a really small building next to it. But if we do that by moving around those and, or specifying types, it would be, give it more of a, of a smoother transition, I, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Tzatzinsky?
Well, I was just going to say, there is a spot in Villebois that they have done this, too, where it's, they've got the mixed use and then next door is like the three-story single-family homes. And it works pretty well for that area. So I think that that could work really well. I know that the mixed use with the, either apartments or condos or whatever up above is really trendy right now and there is a market demand for it, so.
Yeah, I would say with those single-family houses, in terms of urban form, they are very close to the street. And even though they're detached homes, they are very much a bulky product. It's close to the street, limited setbacks. It would fit more into that, into that type one category.
Commissioner Mespa?
Carr said it all.
Dan, would you go back to the, the picture of the commercial on Brisbane and that, that street example? So what I wanted to understand is, is that representation a three-story product or a four-story product? Because it looks like a three-story product.
I think it's kind of cut off in the visualization.
Yeah, I haven't heard from the team, actually, what, what was intended.
Okay. My, my recommendation is if, if we are serious about potentially having four-story, then let's make sure that the picture looks like it. Because when I looked at this, I said, oh, okay, that looks about right. But then the idea of four-story seems a little much to me personally.
There's some economies of scale to make construction feasible and stuff there.
Yeah, understood. It just, it, it's going to take some getting used to.
Yeah.
So I, I think we need to make sure that the picture looks like that if, if that's what we're envisioning for that Main Street area.
Makes sense.
I do like the idea that it somewhat conforms, as you said, scaled down to the Town Center. So it gives the town kind of a feel of continuity.
Yeah, going back to that question, I, I think in general, I'm, I'm supportive of both, I think, questions that you guys had in terms of the, using the, the Town Center code. It makes sense.
Okay.
We spent a lot of time talking about the potential for this to be vertical mixed use, so I just want to make sure that, I hear a pulse from the whole commission on the first question.
I'm, I'm for it.
In favor?
What was the first question?
Do you want to flip to your questions? It was about whether you want to be flexible to allow it to be either single-story commercial or vertical mixed use.
Vertical mixed use for me. Did you guys say okay to that?
Would be my choice.
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
So do you want to require vertical mixed use or just, or allow the flexibility, I guess is the question?
Go, go back to the map.
I am all for vertical mixed use. I would require it if it was up to me.
I, and I think if, if we're talking about the, the concept of having tall in the commercial Main Street and then transitioning from there to something smaller, then you have to have, it's not going to be single-level commercial at that point. We're, we're kind of setting that expectation that you're going to have that vertical development and, and we're going to taper out as you go north, south, and east.
So in the first block, do we make it three-story and then four-story in the inner block? Because coming down Stafford, you're going to go, go from country to a four-story building.
Well, I mean, you're going to have two-story along, along, along Stafford.
Say again?
Like in the area to the north, you're going to have at least probably two-story.
Okay.
It's about 800 feet of dimension from Brisbane north up to where you get to the power line.
Okay. So as long as you don't think four-story is all of a sudden is going to look a little like a sore thumb, I'm fine with that. Again, it would be something I'd like to look at because the mixed use we have in Villebois is like in the center of it.
Give us a fly-through.
So what I'm hearing is as we look at kind of the, the finite details of the code, making sure that, that tran, that there's not too abrupt of a transect if we're going vertical mixed use on Brisbane.
Yes.
Yeah, let's step up to it.
Yeah. But I think in, in general, I think vertical mixed use is the right way to go for that area.
Agreed.
I would be interested on that, though, to understand from a developer perspective, is that feasible for that area? That would be the, the question that I would have as we move forward.
I think that's an important question, and we've got some folks, I think, who might want to comment. So I hope they do comment on that. And I thank you for bringing it up because as we all know, that that has been part of the challenge in Villebois.
Yeah.
So I think we got our...
Yeah.
We got our direction.
Yeah.
Great. So, Dan, is this the point that we open it up for public comment?
That would be my suggestion, Sher. And I know we have two in the audience and potentially one on online. So do you, if you want to message Sparkle, just confirm if she wants to make any comments.
May we take a bio break?
We may, yes. Let's adjourn until 7:37.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I call us back to order at 7:37. Okay, so we are going to take some time for some opportunity for public testimony. I would like to remind the audience that they need to fill out a testimony card either physically or via email. And those testifying need to state their name and address for the record, or they can state that their address is as provided on the testimony card for the record. And for the commissioners, just a note, you are permitted to ask the applicants questions regarding their testimony and we can also ask staff additional questions after we've heard the public testimony to work through anything as a result of that public testimony. All right. That being said, I think we have one person online. I think Sparkle Anderson is online.
Yes.
All right.
Asking Sparkle to unmute. There we go. Is she unmuted?
She is.
All right. Ms. Anderson, you're unmuted if you'd like to speak.
I can give her a call here. She's going to have technical difficulties. I can step out and call Ms. Anderson to make, to double check.
Yeah.
And we can go on to the next.
Okay. So I will go ahead and get started with the testimony in person. Looks like first on the, on the plan is Mimi Dukas? Was that right?
Testing?
Oh, hi, Dan. I can't hear you. I've, I've watched the whole meeting, but I can't hear a thing.
Oh, no. Is the audio out?
It sounded like it was not.
She can't, she probably, she can't hear me.
That could have been why she raised her hand. We don't have the chat.
That means that's out.
Now we're going to have to start over, all over again.
No, the good news is that the televised people at home watching us on cable are watching us have this conversation right now and this will all be on YouTube too. It's just the Zoom would have been muted. So let me go find out if Dan wants to just put the phone, because we can hear her, she just can't hear us. Sorry, technical difficulties. Does she want to talk?
Uh, no.
Okay. Short answer is no, and we will call her and chat with her.
Great. Well, to the three people on YouTube watching, thank you for, for our slight delay here. Mimi, take it away.
Is this microphone working?
Yes, it is.
Okay. If I look nervous, I saw a spider come running over here, so.
It hasn't been used in a while, so.
It's throwing me off.
Sit over there and.
No, it's, it's fine. I'm tough. I can handle it.
Because I'm not.
Good evening, commissioners and everybody else in attendance. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering. I am working with West Hills on a piece of property within Frog Pond East. We are working on the AZAR property, which comprises about half of the land in Frog Pond East. So that is substantial land holding. We do have a very strong interest in how this development plan moves forward and we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Staff is aware of some of the things that we would like to adjust in the land plan itself and staff has alluded to that. So we do have a vision for what can happen in this property. We're hearing very loudly from the city, a variety of people, city council, planning commission staff, that housing variety is a very important goal and we share that goal. Real estate works better if you have a variety of housing. It, everything sells faster, it looks better, you get more market share. It's, it's just a good investment to have housing variety. So we have every intention of that. The AZAR property within your land plan, however it ends up sort of shimmying around, the AZAR property has the most brown color on the map. It has the only pink on the map. And then we have the orange and we have the light yellow. So we have an urban design spectrum for what that intensity is going to be. On top of that, we're talking about housing variety. So what West Hills plans on building are single-family detached homes, single-family attached homes, multi-family garden-style apartments, and then vertical mixed use for the town center. Vertical mixed use is one of the trickier components and yes, we are a little concerned about how much commercial is viable in that location. But we do know that vertical housing has a real opportunity, but the main street concepts that you've seen are different from garden-style walk-ups. So the garden-style walk-ups that we're thinking for, the brown that will help transition around the town center, those can be walk-up garden-style apartments. That gives a more affordable type of multi-family. The vertical that we're talking about for the town center is really needing elevators. That is a different type of development. It's a different price point. So we want that type of variety. We, we're striving for it. Our concern is the level of calculus that's going to go into the regulations that have been discussed this evening is going to make our life very challenging on implementation. And I would just say that if, if we've got single-family detached and we've got town houses, but then we've got them in the light yellow, we've got them in the orange and we've got them in the brown, those are different housing types. A detached home that is in the light yellow is not the same as a detached home that is in the brown. And so you're going to get variety in each of those housing types as it's spread across the different urban design categories. So I think some of your concerns about housing variety is going to be addressed in that urban design overlay. So that's part of why I caution you in putting too much additional layers on top of that. If, if we end up with layer and layer and layer and layer, our implementation's just going to break at some point. I would also be concerned about how you put the requirements on your sub-districts. So you're talking about putting a percent requirement for housing variety either by tax lot or by sub-district. The sub-districts that we had to work through on Frog Pond West, West Hills and AKS have both done multiple projects within Frog Pond West. Those sub-districts were challenging. They were, they, they had densities assigned on sub-district. It didn't match the net. The, the, the number of units that we got relative to development standards didn't quite line up. We had real problems on the implementation side. We got through it, but I, I would be careful with how we do sub-districts and, and how you apply that. So I, I think my main message is be careful about how much calculus you put into your development code. You're going to get variety with some pretty basic controls, saying that you've got to achieve, I, I think the, the 50% maximum of a single housing type, that's, that's a good regulation. That's, that's pretty straightforward. You talked about the category A and category B, but maybe not category C. Category C is the middle housing. Middle housing is covered in the same categories that you've already talked about for housing variety. So small lots, single-family detached can be middle housing. Town homes can be middle housing. They can also be not middle housing. So again, too much calculus, you, you risk kind of breaking the system. And there is a certain amount of, I know you don't want to be driven by market viability, but you do want a plan that works. And market realities do factor into what can get financing, what can attract a developer, what can attract buyers. So I would, I would also caution you not to ignore market viability, but maybe you don't want to be driven by it. So there's a middle ground in, in there. Excuse me. So I would say A and B makes sense, but I would not put the C category on top of it. I think those were my main categories. There it is.
Yeah.
Is it coming my way? Kill it! Be my hero, Daniel!
I'll do it for you, Miranda, even though I usually don't kill spiders.
Sorry for all the.
But Miranda, I don't, for your benefit, I killed the spider.
So I think my main points in question were, when you're looking at the percentages that, that you're talking about, I would, from our perspective, if you applied across the whole tax lot and not do it by subcategory of the colors across the tax lot, with our site, we could end up with nine different categories, maybe even more, if you're doing it by subcategory and by tax lot. So that's, that's a lot to deal with and particularly when, again, a small lot, single-family detached house can mean different things when it's small versus big. Same thing with town homes, small versus big. You're going to get that variety regardless. So, Dan, did I miss anything?
Maybe a couple things.
Do you want to testify next?
So before, yeah, before I want to make sure we open it up for any, any comments from the commission or from staff specifically on, on your comments. By the way, thank you very much for, for coming and providing your input. This is very important for us to be able to hear, you know, some of the reality and, and so that we don't, you know, get lost in, in the, the idealism of it all. So thank you for taking the time out of your day to, to come and talk to us.
I have a question about that C that you said would be unnecessary. I was looking at that and it looked to me like it was just a head count to make sure that you covered C in A and B, period. It's, it's not to me an added requirement if you're already able to, to count and say, you know, in A and B, we already have covered C. That's all it's doing as far as I'm, I'm concerned. Were you seeing some other angle on that?
My struggle is I am not 100% sure what is middle housing versus what is not middle housing. What is just a small lot detached home versus a middle housing home? Or an exploded duplex versus a middle housing duplex? I, I think there's, there's traditional homes that would check the box on middle housing and I don't even know how to draw that bright line.
We would, for clarity, we would do it based on the state law definitions.
I still don't think that's a bright line.
Grant, and especially when you get into the cluster housing and.
Well, those are easy. That's a completely different housing type. But I, I can tell you, our, our group is not going to build cluster housing. It's just, it's not what, what Hills builds. So, you know, that's a category that, that just doesn't match what we do. We do, we do masters on the main. I, I think there's probably potential for an ADU out there, but at the end of the day, it's mostly a variety of sizes of detached homes, a variety of sizes of, of town homes, garden apartments and vertical apartments is, is really the variety that we're going for. And middle housing is probably in that, that mix of things.
Thank you.
Dan, Joe? Dan, Joe, any comments, anything to, to say? I think one of the, the challenges that, that Mimi brought up was, was some of the challenges in terms of the Frog Pond West implementation. Are there things that we can learn from that in terms of, of making sure that we don't repeat those same mistakes in, in East and South?
That was one of my fir, I had one of the same first comments as Mimi when we started this project. It's like, we didn't want to do sub-districts like Frog Pond West. I 100% agree with her on that. So yes, it, it, we really, in the way we're addressing it, bur property and also experience in Vilibah is when you try to implement regulations over two different developments, it, it just, it's, it's, it adds difficulty to the calculus. And I think really keeping it at the right scale and so, yeah, we've definitely had that considered and I think we'll continue to have that lens as we get into the detail of the implementation.
Okay. Thank you, Mimi.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next up on the list is Dan Grimberg.
Dan Grimberg, West Hills Land Development, 3330 Northwest Eon Avenue, Portland, Oregon. I'll keep my comments very brief. I think Mimi covered most of our comments and concerns. West Hills has been involved in like six different UGB expansion areas and I could name them, but anyway, all of them, basically all of them. And we've been very involved in the Frog Pond West. We've done six developments. We've developed three. We've got three more projects that have DRB approval and actually they've been annexed to the city and the zoning is approved. So we like Wilsonville a lot. We're very excited about our opportunity in Frog Pond East, which is the AZAR property. And we're trying to get plugged in with the planning process and this is moving really fast, which normally that would be great, right? The developer always wants it fast. But it's going fast and we're like, we can't catch up. And that's very concerning, quite frankly. And we don't want to slow it down, but at the end, when it gets approved, we've got to make it work. And when I hear, and my stomach is like, 50% this and 20% that, I'm like, 50% of what? What area and what? You know, there's a lot, a lot of definitions so far. And so we've got a great opportunity on this piece of property and we'd like to, you know, develop all of it, quite frankly. That's our attitude. If we get one piece, then we like to develop that, go to the next one. And that's what we've done in Frog Pond West. But when we hear certain percentages and we are all for variety, to a certain point, it's got to make sense in the market. We do develop for a market. We don't create the market. We produce for a market and we do a really good job of it. And we can do all those housing types. There might be a few that we would choose not to do in Frog Pond East for, because there is no market, so, you know. And to think that, well, let's add 10% of those, somebody will like that somewhere along the line. We can't develop a part of a property, right? We, we buy, we spend a lot of money, millions of dollars on a piece of property. We buy the whole thing. So we can't not buy the stuff that's for later. Like 20 years later, that might be a good idea. We can't do that. So we got to put the street.
I still don't think that's a bright line.
Grant, especially when you get into the cluster housing and.
Well, those are easy, that's a completely different housing type. But I can tell you, our group is not going to build cluster housing. It's just, it's not what West Hills builds. So, you know, that's a category that just doesn't match what we do. We do masters on the main, I think there's probably potential for an ADU out there, but at the end of the day, it's mostly a variety of sizes of detached homes, a variety of sizes of townhomes, garden apartments, and vertical apartments is really the variety that we're going for. And middle housing is probably in that mix of things.
Thank you.
Dan, Joe, any comments, anything to say? I think one of the challenges that Mimi brought up was some of the challenges in terms of the Frog Pond West implementation. Are there things that we can learn from that in terms of making sure that we don't repeat those same mistakes in East and South?
That was one of my, I had one of the same first comments as Mimi when we started this project, is like, we didn't want to do sub-districts like Frog Pond West. I 100% agree with her on that, so yes, we really, in the way we're addressing it, we're property, also experience in Villebois, is when you try to implement regulations over two different developments, it just, it adds difficulty to the calculus. And I think really keeping it at the right scale, and so, yeah, we've definitely had that considered, and I think we'll continue to have that lens as we get into the detail of the implementation.
Okay. Thank you, Mimi.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up on the list is Dan Grimberg.
Dan Grimberg, West Hills Land Development, 3330 Northwest Eon Avenue, Portland, Oregon. I'll keep my comments very brief, I think Mimi covered most of our comments and concerns. West Hills has been involved in like six different UGB expansion areas, and I could name them, but anyway, all of them, basically all of them. And we've been very involved in the Frog Pond West, we've done six developments, we've developed three, we've got three more projects that have DRB approval, and actually they've been annexed to the city, and the zoning is approved. So we like Wilsonville a lot, we're very excited about our opportunity in Frog Pond East, which is the AZAR property, and we're trying to get plugged in with the planning process. And this is moving really fast, which normally that would be great, right? The developer always wants it fast. But it's going fast, and we're like, we can't catch up, and that's very concerning, quite frankly. And we don't want to slow it down, but at the end, when it gets approved, we've got to make it work. And when I hear, and my stomach is like, 50% this and 20% that, I'm like, 50% of what? What area and what? You know, there's a lot, a lot of definitions so far. And so we've got a great opportunity on this piece of property, and we'd like to, you know, develop all of it, quite frankly, that's our attitude. If we get one piece, then we like to develop that, go to the next one, and that's what we've done in Frog Pond West. But when we hear certain percentages, and we are all for variety, to a certain point, it's got to make sense in the market. We do develop for a market, we don't create the market, we produce for a market, and we do a really good job of it. And we can do all those housing types. There might be a few that we would choose not to do in Frog Pond East for, because there is no market, so, you know. And to think that, well, let's add 10% of those, somebody will like that somewhere along the line. We can't develop a part of a property, right? We buy, we spend a lot of money, millions of dollars on a piece of property, we buy the whole thing. So we can't not buy the stuff that's for later, like 20 years later, that might be a good idea. We can't do that. So we got to put the streets in, we got to put the utilities in for all of it, and it all needs to work. And we're pretty good at blending the different housing types, but each one has to be viable. It can't be like, well, maybe, banks don't lend on maybes, they just don't, that's the reality. So we think you're doing great, we'd like to have more input, we have a plan, we'd like to share it with you so you could see maybe what we're talking about, because a lot of what's being talked about tonight, quite frankly, is like, kind of like the fun stuff, like big picture, like, what's, I thought your question was excellent, what's that look like? Well, we have a pretty good idea how it looks, and we can show you what our plan is, and we'd like to share that, so it makes some sense that you know kind of what these percentages are. Because that can get this, the planning locked in, and if it gets so locked in, we've got to try to make that work, and if it doesn't work, development doesn't happen, which then you don't get variety, you don't get, nobody gets anything. So we were involved in Frog Pond West, and that's when it went with the large lot, right? And we're like, oh, boy, that's going to be interesting. So we pioneered the market, and we made Frog Pond West work with the large lot, and eventually that became successful. But early on, that wasn't easy, right? So we made it work. So Frog Pond East was going to be the more affordable, we're like, now that, we want to be part of that. So we're with you. We want to provide more affordable housing, there's more of a market. And so we're not trying to not do what you want to do, we might just do it a little differently, and I think we'd like to sit down somehow in some kind of a workshop and share with you what our vision is, because I think it's pretty close to yours. It may be just, I just get really concerned when I hear numbers that get locked in, because that may or may not work. So appreciate all your hard work, sorry I rambled, I told Mimi I wouldn't do that, I did it anyway. But we're very passionate about what we do, we're very excited about Frog Pond East, we're excited about Frog Pond West, and we want to be part of it, but we want to make sure it works. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
For you.
For you, yeah. So I like the fact that you have a plan, I like plans. I would be interested, if we can, to see what your plans are, but I'd also like to understand if your plans could be applied to smaller parcels. Because that's a concern that I have, is that we get to these individual smaller parcels, and we're just going to see one type of house built unless we have some type of min's and maxes. I don't want to, I don't want those min's and maxes to be onerous. I don't want to break somebody's plan, but I also need to protect the rest of Frog Pond, not just East, but also South, where the lots are much smaller, or property areas are smaller.
Well, in Frog Pond West, as an example.
Would you mind getting closer to the microphone for the record?
It feels like I'm yelling, so I'm.
You can, there you go. That'll help.
So Frog Pond West is maybe a good example, those are all small parcels. So, you know, maybe there's a three-acre parcel, a five-acre parcel. What we typically do is we like to combine the small parcels into one, maybe 15, 20-acre parcel. But we're currently, a couple of plans we have right now, one's 10 acres, one's four and a half acres, another one might be 10 acres, but buildables maybe four and a half acres. I mean, so those are all, that's how Frog Pond West is primarily developing. And those can have variety, they can have large lot, they could have a medium lot, and then you've got this middle housing component that is new, that we're pretty excited about. So we're playing around with that on a lot of our opportunities, because it provides another type of housing. So I think with the middle housing as a possibility, now you want to make it compatible, and we think you can do some of that with good architecture, you can have a small house and a large house within, you know, certain parameters that work well together. Can you do that with an apartment? No, because it's too small of a piece of property. But you can get variety, so I think that would work. There's probably other ways to do it. You know, you can take, in Frog Pond West, I mean, it's not zoned for property, right? It's kind of zoning the overall area, so that's one way you can get variety housing. This guy gets the medium housing, and the 10 acres or five acres next door gets the small lot. And then there's variety within that. I mean, we've learned, we've been in this business a long time, you can create a lot of variety just with the architecture. And we did that in Villebois, right? There's a lot of variety within the architecture, you can't, you know, what's it called? You can't have the same house next door, it's got to be, you know, pop-outs, this much glass, all the stuff you can do, right? You can make that all look good, and you can combine it with a different type of housing, but that, to me, isn't necessarily all the variety. I mean, you can create great variety with just different design. You could have a modern, you know, you could have a craftsman, you could have a lot of different things. So, I think you can have a variety of housing on any size development, it's just, it may not be as varied because it's smaller, but you can still get variety.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dan. I think, you know, from my perspective, I'm not sure what we can and can't do in terms of communication with a developer, so I would ask that staff, you know, take that and look and see what is feasible. It would be great to understand, just for me, as an idea of what this conceptually might look like, to get a feel for how this type of development could look with this, with this kind of development plan that they're working on. It's an interesting idea to be able to see it kind of as it's morphing.
Yeah, and we've had several conversations with West Hills through this process, so just in terms of keeping them engaged as a stakeholder, along with other property owners in Frog Pond East and South, making sure they're aware and have an opportunity to provide input along the way. It is a fast-moving master plan project in comparison to other master plans we've done, so I also understand that feeling of the communication maybe hasn't been as slow or as extensive as it has been on other projects. But we've seen proposals for them, and we're working with them and thinking through some of that as we have these conversations with all of you. I would like to also note, like, I know, I want to address the concern about a lot of percentages thrown out there tonight, and kind of reiterate something we said at the beginning of the meeting, but gets lost when we do start talking about percentages, which is, we're really just trying to understand kind of where this might go, to then make sure we're framing the intent in the master plan correctly at this point in time. And so what actually will move forward when we come back in October and November will be around the policies and the intent that will go in the master plan itself and adopt it into the comprehensive plan, but that some of those more details around percentages and talking about, like, what we're actually going to put into the development code, that work will be continuing into the new year. And so we've said that a few times, but I know as soon as we talk percentages, that there's a little bit of a disconnect there, but we're just trying to feel the pulse of where it might be headed to make sure that we get the intent right, and the framing in the master plan and the comprehensive plan correctly. And so I think on that note, staff is also open to and planning on having more conversations with stakeholders and developers about what that development code will look like as we start bringing it back in front of the Planning Commission, City Council. Dan, anything else?
Yeah, and, I mean, West Hills is welcome to submit any documents into the record that we can share with the Planning Commission, so.
Great, thank you. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, really what I'm hearing from the commission is that the variety is important, and that we need to have all of these different types, and it really is, how do we ensure that it happens? So we've got more work to do.
And the affordability, I mean, it's the variety and the affordability that is driving how we build the master plan.
Great, great discussion, I'm glad we did this. That's it, so let me get to this portion of my, we are ready to adjourn, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. This meeting is adjourned at 8:06 PM.
8:06 PM.
Thank you.